All right, folks. Thanks for being here today. Today we've got Mayor Phil Brock, who is an incumbent running for his second term on the Santa Monica City Council. Thank you very much for being here today. Why don't you take a minute, tell folks who you are and why you're running?
I'm a kid who served here, played on all of our sports fields, grew up here. I'm a second generation son of Santa Monica. I volunteered for almost thirty years in the city. Five different service organizations, vice chair of the Salvation Army, head of Santa Monica High School alumni. Served eighteen years as a city commissioner, fourteen on recreation and parks, four years as an arts commissioner. I ran for city council in 2020 because I felt the city was in crises and had forgotten about the needs of our residents and business community. Unfortunately, we've spent the last four years careening from crisis to crisis. We're making progress. The city is stable again. Now we need to make it safe, clean, and a place that residents love again and that we in some ways bring the smile back to Santa Monica residents. We can't just hear about crime and homelessness every single day. We've got to control those problems and then work on all the things that make us a great progressive city over the decades.
So how are you going to control crime and homelessness?
You're not supposed to ask me that. Come on now. Well, look at.
I've been doing my best. We have, first, I've reached out on the national level, state level, county level. I'm members of anti-crime public safety committees at National League of Cities, League of California Cities, and in addition to that, I'm on the United States Conference of Mayors homelessness task force. So I've spent three different trips to Washington this year fighting to have the federal government do more, from mental health to homelessness to tougher crime initiatives. I am one of the lead Southern California sponsors for Prop 36, which would modify the ten-year-old Prop 47 and hopefully give us
more tools, give the police more tools to control our streets, to control shoplifting, to control drug use. All those things are really important to our residents. In addition to that, I have been tireless in my support for more public safety officers on our streets, both armed and unarmed in Santa Monica. We have to be able to deal with several emergencies at once and at the same time, work to make sure that our neighborhoods are always proactively patrolled by Santa Monica police, because it's not just getting the bad guys, which Santa Monica does a great job of, it's preventing the bad guys from doing crime in our city.
That's important. And so I have, since I was elected, time and time again, every budget session brought the fact that we need more police, more public safety officers, more street task force to control homelessness in our city. And at the same time, this year alone, I launched three initiatives to help alleviate the continuing issue of homelessness in our city.
So picking apart those a little bit, how many police officers do you think we need? You know, we've got whatever, call it two thirty now, give or take. The chief, I think, has asked for two fifty at a budget session, right? The union, I think, has pitched a two eighty number. There have been candidates who've said more than three hundred, like there's a varying scale. So like, where are you? How many officers do we need?
Studies have shown, to my knowledge, that we need two hundred and seventy-eight police officers to handle both the weekend traffic, the influx of tourist visitors and job force, and to make sure that we're adequately patrolled through our city and have the separate task forces that we need, detective bureau, larceny bureau, all those different things that you need to control different aspects of crime. Right now, we're at two hundred and fourteen officers, which is the highest level we've had since before May thirty-first, twenty twenty.
We've hired four. We have a budget for more than that, right?
Yeah, we have, right. Filling. Right now, though, this is the highest. I swear and help swear on two officers last week. So that was our two hundred and thirteen, two hundred and fourteen officers. The cap that I fought for in June is the new cap would be two hundred and thirty-two officers. And that was funding for four more police officers. That's still not enough. And at the pace of recruitment versus retirees, it'll be hard to even get there. But if we had an ideal world with an unlimited budget and we were financially sound, like we used to be, two hundred and seventy-eight officers would be a reasonable amount to cover not only today, but the increase in population for the next decade.
And so there's a couple of factors around this. There's how do we get there? And there's how much of a difference will that make in terms of the problems we're facing? So I mean, so how do we get there? Because as we said, so what is our exact budgeted number is two twenty-eight, right? So I round numbers off in my head.
Plus the four new officers that I pushed for.
So, but we have, to the rest of my knowledge, never actually been quote-unquote fully staffed. Like, I don't know of a time in my time here where we actually had all of our positions filled.
There were four months.
Was there a four-month window?
Yeah.
Great. And so if we are, we set the cap, any number, pick a number, if there aren't enough officers to fill it, what difference is that going to make? Like, how is that going to solve our problem?
Well, let's look at, and this is a city that Santa Monicans really don't like to look at, but Beverly Hills. Beverly Hills, their cap for police officers is a hundred and fifty officers. They've been at a hundred and fifty officers for the last year. So they're able to maintain their department, add the new officers they need. Now, our pay scales are equal. They're not dealing as much with homelessness and a huge influx of crime every day. They also employ, though, two private security services that are armed in Beverly Hills to supplement their police department. So they know that they really haven't been able to fully secure their city. They also have twenty-two hundred cameras. They have license plate readers at every intersection when you enter the city. And they have a robust complement of drones. So, yes, we're going to have problems getting there, but if we recruit and we take officers from other departments, which we've been doing, and they transition to Santa Monica, if we offer better working conditions, if we offer our police backup from the courts, from the district attorney, then yes, I think we can get there. And having the goal is great. Now, your second part of your question is how do you pay for it? Well, that's a problem. Our city is three steps away from, and this is a really bad word, but bankruptcy right now. We have severe financial issues. But I believe that priority-wise, our residents deserve nothing less. Our residents demand that our streets, our alleys, our roads be safe and so do our businesses. So we have to make that the priority over everything else. That has to be the priority, number one, to make sure our budget is secure, our reserves come back up, and we don't, we are not hopefully engaged in lawsuits that sap our financial strength. And in addition to that, making sure that the budget contains the money doesn't always have to be police officers. I've advocated every year for more public safety officers. They're civilians, but they're bad, they have badges, they're walkie-talkies. They can patrol our parks. They can patrol Ocean Avenue, Palisades Park, which are desperate needs of more policing. And they can also control the promenade. So those, those aspects, two public safety officers, two and a half public safety officers equals one police officer. Right now, we have seventeen. Our cap there is twenty-four. The chief and the department have not been pushing recruitment for public safety officers. I asked for thirty. So thirty would give us the ability to patrol parks more frequently because they are the direct successors of our park rangers.
So this comes up, this leads into a sort of a bigger question for you, which is, if the, so we don't have the money right now, we definitely want to talk about where the money's going, but we don't have the money, it's just a statement of fact. What we have is our definitive budget. So the only way to pay for anything new right now is to re, is to adjust budget priorities, right? It's to take from Peter to pay Paul. Like, that's that's how that's going to work until such time as the economy recovers. That is a political process. That's a negotiation process. That's a discussion amongst the seven council members to get a majority vote to pass the budget. So you've been on council for, you know, four years, right? You're going to second, hopefully getting your second term, right? So you've been on council a little while already. You are mayor now. Why have you been unable to secure the votes that you need to adjust the budget or implement your other priorities? Because I know, I know the answer is why I haven't had the votes. Cool, I get that. Why haven't you been able to convince your fellow council members to do what you would like them to do?
Well, I can give you the stock answer. Stock answer would be there are two distinct sides on our council and they don't agree. Whereas in other west-side cities, South Bay cities, the city councils always agree a hundred percent on anti-crime public safety legislation. We don't. We have a theoretically, I have three, count two council members with me, a fourth sometimes, and the other side has three. Our immediate past mayor said before that homelessness, they're just our neighbors. They're part of our city. That particular mayor also said, I don't trust the SNP D. Well, those things hurt recruitment. And frankly, we're not going to recover economically unless the city is deemed as safe. Businesses shy away. You've all heard the negative publicity that's come out over the last two years. And now it's a constant stream, whether it's justified or not.
Sure. And I'll argue that it's in large part justified. And I apologize for interrupting, but we do have a story today in today's paper, giant front page story. Santa Monica is the most difficult place for businesses to do business. We have been saying that at the Daily Press for a long time. And this is just sort of a, I guess, a personal tirade. The city, the city has pushed back on us and come at me personally hard over how dare we highlight the difficulty in permitting here? How are we not talking about how it's, all these things the city is doing? Santa Monica, since I got here, has had a reputation for being a difficult place to do business. Set aside the impacts of crime and homelessness for now, happy to come back to. It's a, people have complained for a decade about doing business here. Only recently have the complaints moved to the level where they're willing to go on the record because businesses prior to that were afraid that going on the record would get them further penalized. But we did, I think it was like six or seven stories about a new business opening, and unprompted, every one of those business owners said, god damn, it's difficult to do business here. And so when we talk about economic recovery, I know we're transitioning to a subject here, but you sort of you hit the button on the head for today's story, which is that like, some of that's the city's fault. Some of that's not crime and homelessness's fault. Some of that's the city of Santa Monica's policies and attitudes towards businesses.
And we know that. I'm the first to admit, we are not a business-friendly city. Another one of our former mayors told the chamber in a meeting, I'll never vote for anything that has to do with business in the city. Well, I can tell you, I am pro-business. I believe our small retail stores are the lifeblood of our city. But if you're a restaurant and it takes you twice as long to open as you should, that's a real problem. When I first ran for council in 2014, I met, I was at Jocelyn Dog Park campaigning. And I met a person who has a successful restaurant, just opened a second one. But at the time, he had bought a condo in Santa Monica. His restaurant was undergoing renovations. It had been a real cheesy, sleazy bar on Pico Boulevard. He was just trying to add windows, make it brighter, and get open. It had been thirteen months and he had had to hire an expediter law firm to help him get through the process. At that time, he said he had enough money saved up for two more months. If he didn't open, it was all going to go away. And he started crying in Jocelyn Dog Park. Cue to the last six months, last year. I had an Italian restaurant that wanted to move from Fifth and Santa Monica into the kiosk at the corner of Arizona and Third. Said he could do a great lunch business. He thought he could keep the evening dining going. For four months, five months, the city just ignored him and kept postponing. They decided they wanted boba shop there instead. Now, the boba shop opened last week. Two years after the other restaurant shuttered, that restaurateur moved to Mallorca. Just left the United States. He was so fed up. We have always been a tough place to do business. And again, I have begged, tried. We just installed a new computer system that's supposed to make plans and permits quicker. But I think the, I get two, three major complaints every day. One is crime. What's happened in their part of the city where people are angry, frustrated, upset? Second is I have a homeless person in my alley. I just got that this morning. Santa Monica police were there twice. Didn't make the guy move. The resident and his little kids, he's just so frustrated. And I had a trespasser in his building yesterday who came back again today. The police also just told the guy to move along. Thirdly, though, businesses permitting. Every single day I have problems. It's not only businesses. It's people who want to remodel their bathroom.
Oh, yeah.
People who want to add a bedroom.
It is horrible where, where you get some, sometimes city council members, everyone else, they ignore city permits because that's the only way you'll get built quickly. If they catch you, they catch you, but just build. That's a problem too. I can't condone that. But I've asked over and over again for a concierge-type service where, where you apply for a building permit, especially if you're a retailer and you're remodeling a space, that you get the same planner, the same plan check people, the same permit people throughout the entire process, and they expedite. We've done things to make zoning easier. But honestly, I've had people who opened in West Hollywood or Beverly Hills or other cities who said, it was easy. Here, it's terrible. The owner of Ingo's and Misfit has taken years.
Yeah, Ingo's is still under construction.
Plan check hell, where one inspector will come out, say your plumbing's good here. Next, new inspector comes out three days later and says, no, no, that plumbing's wrong. You have to change the faucet or you have to do this. We have no consistency. And in spite of my efforts, council member, Vice Mayor Negrete's efforts, other people's efforts, the staff seem to work on their own plane. And they feel they outlast city council members. So they don't work as quickly. They don't work as hard as I want. Not individually work as hard, but not work as hard to change the system. We should be, yeah, and the systemic problem hurts us because we should be a city that, especially now, welcomes, puts the red carpet out for new businesses, helps them get open, pushes them to open, does everything we can within the law to make sure that they're open and they're open quickly so they can be successful. Because what I need are successful businesses in the city.
So this comes back to the question again around, if you've successfully identified the problem, why haven't you solved it? Right? Again, I guess, and the topics you raised, I agree, everyone talks about. The second phase of the question that we get universally here is, well, why, why haven't we solved this? Why haven't we done something? Why are we still talking about the problem that we had ten years ago? And whether that's crime, when a crime is a little bit different because it waxes and wanes, right? But whether that's homelessness or whether that's the problems with business development or whatever, pick something. There's so many things that are just perpetual. And so you, as an incumbent, have the benefit of incumbency, but you also have the anchor of, like, you've had a bite at this apple and it's still here. So why should people trust that this next bite is going to actually solve it? Like, we know you, you have a plan. Why, why do you need four more years to implement it?
We've implemented a lot of changes. So in defense, this has been the most tumultuous four years in the city's history, period.
Yeah, I mean, you were elected following a riot and looting, right? Like, there's no downplaying how significant that was.
And a hundred and fifty-eight businesses trashed that day. Four hundred, almost three hundred and fifty-four staff members laid off just before I took office. Hundred and fifty-eight million cut from the budget. We still have not restored all the positions. I'm not sure we needed to because when I ran, I said, City Hall was bloated. We need to be leaner. Well, we're leaner now. But we do need staff. I don't need white-collar staff right now. I need blue-collar staff. My carpenter department, for instance, in the city yards, one of the lead carpenters passed away last week. So there is one carpenter for the city. Our plumbing department is short. Most of our actual repair departments, bus and police repairs. They're operating with half the mechanics they operated with prior to 2020. They're doing more work, but they're not necessarily doing it. They're not able to do it as quickly or as efficiently or get on things. Street lighting. Street lighting's a big, huge issue right now. We had hundreds of miles of copper stolen from our streetlights. So.
People would, in our old office, the folks don't know we moved offices, our old office, the super bad location, and every single, literally every day, no exaggeration, literally every single day, somebody would try and dig up the irrigation pipe that was in the city's, I think it's Metro's landscape. Except for some unbeknownst and moronic reason, it's PVC, but they fucking painted it copper. So when the criminal digs it up, it's copper, and then it's PVC. So they literally made the thing that's not valuable look like it's valuable. People kept trying to steal it.
Wow.
Idiotic decision.
Yeah. So look at, all those things have factored in. Two hundred and thirty million dollar judgment so far in a child abuse case that started in nineteen ninety-one, went on till the person committed suicide in twenty seventeen. As he was about to be arrested, someone in the police department somehow tipped him off that the sheriffs were coming to his house. Now, I don't know the particulars. I don't know the details, but I know we've had systemic problems for years. And voting rights lawsuit. But the main things, the layoffs of staff, in some cases, there are staff who had done things a certain way for their entire career. And their particular ship didn't move as quickly as it should have. So staff are changing. We're seeing progress. We're seeing progress with new computer systems. But we're also still seeing a lot of the same systemic problems because it seems like, I listen, city council hears the complaints, but we are the board of directors for the city. And that's what residents don't really understand. I have the same amount of power as a mayor that I had as a city council person.
Sure.
One of seven. The difference is that I have the bully pulpit. I have a chance to talk about the issues and hopefully make progress that way. We have made, in actuality, a tremendous amount of progress from parklets to easier zoning on the promenade, easier zoning throughout the city. But I think we've created new problems in some ways. So as far as I'm concerned, we've spent our time, the last three and a half years now, really trying to stop, put our fingers in dykes that we're opening up continuously and trying to blockade those and move on to other dykes. So some of the things we haven't been able to accomplish as much as I'd like. And the only reason I thought long and hard about running again. And I literally waited a couple of weeks because I wasn't sure. It's not only the effect on me, it's the effect on my significant other Catherine and our lives. And I looked at it and said, well, I was first appointed to a city commission in twenty, uh, two, twenty twenty-two, but had started volunteering for the city and school district in nineteen ninety-six. So I looked at it and said, how much longer? What can I do? And then I was convinced by many in the city that at this point, I was the stability, that we had to find a way to move forward with programs and keep pushing, that otherwise things would die. And frankly, even if we vote on something, it may die. You know, I've pushed for ordinances on trees to offset some of the development. I've pushed for a lot of other things in the city. I got a poet laureate. That's great.
Sure.
But that's not the important thing. That's the fluff.
There's always something around the edges. But coming back to the important thing, like, I want to come back to homelessness real quick because we kind of got sidetracked a little bit from where we were on that conversation. You know, I don't think it's, I know the answer to the question, but do you think Santa Monica has made itself a magnet for homelessness?
Harry Shear, Home of the Homeless.
Correct. So I, I think.
This is a forty, oh, no, this is a forty-year issue. From, from city attorney Bob Myers saying, let's feed everyone in the city hall lawn to feedings that used to go on in Palisades Park.
Yeah, long history of that. But I guess where I'm going with this is, I want to know what, so if we start from the premise that Santa Monica is doing stuff to draw homeless people here beyond our ability to cope with it and arguably our moral responsibility to take care of them. Like, I think there's a debate point there about what is our moral responsibility if we draw folks from other people here? The question I have for you is, A, the moral responsibility side of it, but B, what are you going to do in the next four years to address the tide, like stem the tide? What are you going to do? What policy procedure, what can you put in place that is going to stem the flow of homeless folks into the city or get enough of them off the streets such that the flow, inflow isn't overwhelming and damaging to our city? What's the policy? What's the procedure? What's the change? What's the law?
And it's been damaging. There's no question about it. And it has exponentially increased over the last six years, seven years. The pandemic brought it out to a head, even though we knew there was homelessness. We have put up with it in some ways and tried to be, we are compassionate for our city. But I would venture to say compassion plus accountability are the ways to go. We have to hold everyone to a standard, whether they're housed or unhoused. And we've been unable to do that partly because of federal laws, partly because of Supreme Court rulings, partly because of LA County, the lack of help from LA County. This is not a problem Santa Monica can solve on its own. If I've got almost a thousand people in eight-point square, eight-point-three-square-mile city, we have a huge issue and we all see it. On the city council side, first, I have cried in the wilderness for help. In June, I asked to sequester, hold four percent of the budget, use it immediately on mental health and to stem the rise in crime that I saw at the beginning of the summer. My city council said, no, famous last words from a city government, we'll, we'll study it and we'll get back to you. I felt with the tide of crimes we were having right then, we needed help then. Part of this is not in our control. District attorney?
Sure.
I hope people vote. Part of this is a state proposition, Prop thirty-six. I hope people vote for it. But in the city, so we got cooperation from LA County, partway first on an inside safe motel that we converted for the next two years, that's holding forty formerly unhoused people who came from the Santa Monica area, who have been on our streets for years. That's, first of all, shameful. The people I handed keys to in February had compelling stories, not drug addicts. They were people really down on their luck who needed a break. That program, I think, will be successful. They're guaranteed a transition to permanent housing somewhere in LA County within four to five months after they entered that facility. Second, the step court has been a help. You've been convicted on drugs, alcohol. You keep coming back for more charges. You can choose to have a judge and a drug abuse counselor, whatever, go into a residential program. Every month, you go back to the judge. And when you go back to the judge, the judge can determine whether you need to go to prison or if it continues, if it continues.
Yep.
And you do well, your record gets expunged and you're back, hopefully, in society, clean and sober, clean and no drugs.
For folks who don't fully understand, that's important because it makes you then eligible for other kinds of services. There are certain things that are locked off and walled off and you can't get access to with the criminal charges pending, so.
Thirdly, we finally got an LA County mental health mobile ban. However, halfway. In March twenty-one, the city manager promised us that would be on the streets by June twenty twenty-one. Twenty-four hour a day, seven-day-a-week operation. Instead, when it arrived in February, I celebrated its arrival and then realized it's nine to five-thirty, Monday through Friday. So if you're about to commit suicide, if you're about to have a mental breakdown, wait till Monday and we'll take care of you. And further, the units only go out among, upon a call by police or fire. I thought. upon a call by police or fire. I thought that they would patrol the streets. If they saw someone having a breakdown, they would intercept that. They're not. Uh, I was with them a couple of weeks ago when we intercepted a woman having a mental breakdown on Cloverfield and Olympic. And uh, we uh, fifty, she was 51, 50 and I accompanied them to the facility. So as far as, uh, and let me get, I'm sorry to take longer, but, but those are three things we started this year that we're seeing some good results from. Um, a DA, um, a uh, difference in the uh, federal law now that the Supreme Court ruled. Um, has changed things somewhat. It depends how mu- how much guts our city leaders have to implement some of the programs. In addition to that metro, now got uh, hopefully uh, stemming the tide of homelessness that is coming off the metro system. When I was there seven weeks ago overnight, we had 47 homeless people get off that night with nowhere to go. They just wandered our streets. If metro stops that, if metro would go back to where the last four trains stopped originally, which was Bundy Station. Then we wouldn't be getting that extra 45 to 60 people at the end of the night.
Let me, let me, let me come back to what my question here was because that's metro is doing something, that's the DA can do something, that's the county mental health ban. What are you going to do as a council member? Like, I, I, again, again, I'm not disputing the things you said are accurate. Like, I, I get where you're coming from on that. But again, when you talk to folks, they quite frankly, don't give a crap when you say it's, we need a partnership. They don't give a crap when you say we need help from other places. They look at the local race and say, I'm electing you. What are you gonna do? What is your policy? What are you going to change in the next four years? And so I think that's kind of where, where I'm, why I'm trying to get through from you is like, I get we need partnerships. I get there's things to work with other people. But if you're on city council and assuming you have the votes to implement the policies that you want, what are you gonna change? What is something that's going to be an ordinance, a policy that's going to be?
We'll move, we'll move San Michelle from downtown.
Uh, you're off, you're. Is the homeless shelter and service provider.
Right. And the homeless service center, Fifth and Olympic. That's a huge problem, as you know, because that's, your office is overlooked that site. Uh, that's a huge problem in the middle of our downtown. That contributes to the malaise of businesses in downtown. And the fact that you see that, that daily influx of homelessness in the downtown. Uh, the fact that they can get clothes, fed, take showers uh, at that site keeps downtown in a somewhat miserable condition. So we've got to move that. Uh, we're exploring sites right now in the city that would be uh, less conducive to people just hanging out downtown, moving it away from downtown. That's one.
Sure. Just, just so we went clear, that's a, it's a nonprofit facility, but it's located on city property.
Correct.
The city has a lever it can pull.
Correct. And the, and the lease is up in the next couple of years.
I think it's four years, but yeah.
Yeah, it's coming up. Uh, in addition to that, it, I am, I've been working nationally, as I mentioned. US Conference of Mayors. We went back to Washington, the first real achievement. Disabled veterans, if they received all their benefits, could not receive how, needed housing. So they ended up still on the streets if they got their medical. Well, that's ridiculous. So Mayor Bass and I and some other mayors went to Washington. First big progress we made is now HUD. Will no longer count those medical benefits against housing. We estimate we have 94 to 110 homeless veterans on our streets each night. Now, not all of them will accept housing, but it'll now be open. Secondly, and the, and a lot of the plan has to do with other agencies by, by necessity. We can't ban homeless people from our streets. Those are federal and state laws. But what we can do with the help of government, other governments, is to look at the people on our streets who cannot take care of themselves. And find places that they have to go to get well. It is absolutely unacceptable that last Wednesday or Thursday, a 14 year old student is leaving Santa Monica High School, freshman at Samohai. He gets to Seventh and Colorado, homeless person walks by him, hits him in the mouth three times. Hits him in the shoulder, drops him to the ground. The homeless guy just keeps walking. Now, the mu- the mother is just beside herself, justifiably.
Yeah.
Is saying that the city, that we can't do the basic thing that government has to do, which is keep people safe. That's, I've said this in city council numerous times, the mayor and the city council's first job, most important job in any hamlet, village, town, city in the world, is to pledge to keep their residents safe. We haven't done a good job of that. Partly, we've already talked about it's police, it's homeless services. Uh, I asked for street teams. I still want, I'd like to have four street teams out each day. Each quarter of the city, talking to each person who's on our streets and continuously coming back. It's time to get help. It's time to return home. It's time to leave the city. If we don't tackle this as a real emergency. Instead of, we'll look at something long range, we'll talk about next year or the year after, which is what I hear in the city government. I believe we need to act forcefully immediately and, and it's, it can't be with more money. We're spending 38 million a year on treating homelessness now between police, fire, grants. And we've seen in the newspapers the last few days, Step Up and Second is having issues. People are asked, people have asked and on the audit subcommittee, where did people concerned spend money that they couldn't account for? What's really going on? And, and frankly, housing first is not an option in Santa Monica. We don't have the, the room, we don't have the ability and we don't have the funding. But we should. And uh, council member Delatorre and I in 2021 proposed, we use the top parking deck uh, to house homeless people at nights at least and get them off the street. What they're doing in Grants Pass, Oregon, is they've said you can't be in parks at night. You can't be uh, by the river or other places at night, but we have a couple of places. If you need to, you can pitch your tent or whatever and stay there at night. Now, we have to explore more options that, that may sound tougher. But we've got an intractable problem. So first, uh, move San Michelle, move the homeless service center. Uh, find ways to make services really work for people, utilize nonprofits for street help. Uh, get the county to give us the Department of Mental Health workers that we need, the proper amount. Uh, that's something we have to keep doing. Uh, I have worked federally to work on section eight vouchers. Make sure that section eight vouchers for residents of the city are uh, cap their entire rent so they're not forced to move out and maybe end up on the streets. Uh, I'm also talking about project based section eight vouchers. So those people uh, in new building projects, the, the developer could do all affordable and supportive housing. So and I know I'm, there's a lot of, of pins to this. So one is street help. Second, make sure that, that the city stops becoming a magnet for those who are unhoused. Our, our policies that allowed people to be complacent to, well, they're just our neighbors, they're on the street. It's not compassion to leave people on our streets, it's neglect. I'm hoping, I'm trying to change that attitude within and without city government, uh, both sides. Because it is critically important that people understand when they see someone murdered in an alley. When they see someone commit suicide, when they see someone overdose in our streets, that is unacceptable. And leaving people on our streets to die because of fentanyl, trank, meth, whatever it is is unacceptable. So we have to staunch that, that impression that we will be the tourist homeless destination for America.
I get it. And so I want to, a couple of things I want to talk about real quick on this because we're approaching time limits in a certain way. But uh, when you ran four years ago, you sent out a mailer that talked about reducing homelessness by 50%.
And I failed.
Right. You put it in writing.
I, I failed.
You know, in, in the, in the common parlance, and I guess we're in political discussions or maybe conference, but like, that was bullshit. And like, I got that mailer and was like, bullshit. And so the question I, so like, if you're gonna send something like that, then like, that's such a big promise. And it seems so outlandish on the face of it.
Well, actually, it, I'm gonna interrupt for a minute. I apologize. But, but my initial proposal was, uh, you do a one year emergency close of Santa Monica Beach. Uh, state recreation parks would have signed off on an emergency declaration. We were having, by all accounts, uh, one sexual assault every three days in 2018, 19 on Santa Monica beaches. That's horrible. A lot of that was homeless against homelessness, by the way. But by closing the beach from, let's say, 1 AM to 5 AM and clearing the beach, that would stop those people from sleeping on the beach. Uh, the other morning I got a report from a gentleman who owns a house on Arizona. And uh, two houses, uh, Arizona and Santa Monica on the ocean, on Palisades Beach Road. He had 42 homeless people camp within his line of sight and took a, a picture of that. We shouldn't have that. We can't provide housing or camping facilities. Now, we clear them every morning. But I asked at the time for a one year close on Santa Monica Beach. Council member McEwen at the time said, oh my God, we'd never do that. It's inhumane, it's horrible and, and the um, and the authorities would never sign off on it. I believe they would have if we had tried because of the crisis on our beaches at the start of the pandemic. I still believe if you go to Manhattan Beach, Redondo, Hermosa, many cities along our coast. They have an overnight uh, ban on being on the beach at some point. LA had it from midnight to 6 AM and there are still signs up in Santa Monica, on uh, Santa Monica Canyon beaches about that. That would have helped. That would have reduced the inflow because people wouldn't have had a place to go.
Do you think that fire was fundamentally not bullshit? You think it was a reasonable, attainable goal to reduce homelessness by 50%?
I think it was an attainable goal if we did the right things. One was that. Second of all, enough street teams that every single day Salvation Army, people concerned, someone was not just handing someone a bottle of water and a cheese sandwich. But actually actively talking to them about relocating, uh, not allowing them to stay there. This, the guy who got murdered last week, uh, from what I understand, he was in that alley for at least six, seven months. Uh, there's another person in that alley right now who woke people up at 4 AM screaming. Why is he allowed to stay in that alley? At some point, our police department, our, our city manager, our city government has to realize that leaving people on the streets to die is unacceptable. And yes, I believe we could have reduced homelessness. Yes. And homelessness has, I was running, kept getting worse in the city. And because the employees of all the businesses that were working downtown vanished, they all went into remote working.
Yes.
Now, the only people you saw on our streets were homeless individuals. Well, that made the situation at least appear worse than it had been. But frankly, um, we don't enforce all of our park closures equally. We're not enforcing uh, camping or sleeping on the beach the way we should. If we were compassionately aggressive, I guess you'd say. We would.
I get where you're coming from on this.
That would have made a huge difference.
This comes back though, to I guess the fundamental question I had at the beginning, and I feel like we're continually hitting this point, so I don't want to beat the dead horse on it, but it what I hear when I hear, when I, what I think about when I hear that is, well then, why haven't we just done it? And I think your answer is because you don't have the votes on city council to, to flex enough political capital to, to, to steer the ship, right? Like, you know where you want you, I mean, these are my words, not yours. You have a course that you would like to chart. You do not have the ability to steer the ship because there's too many hands on the wheel and I'm mixing metaphors and stuff. That's, that's, this is the theme I'm hearing from you, which is that you, you, the theme I'm hearing is you think, and I'm not missing a valid judgment on what you think about the chart. You think you have a plan. Your, your challenge of implementing it is you have lacked a consistent majority and there's a bunch of stuff we can get into about whose side lawn is on.
Divide in this, well, but a divide in the city and, and the city divide, right? You have, for instance, four candidates right now uh, who are running, who um, you know, believe we let people be in the city, that we keep trying to get them help. Some of the same things I said in 2020. We need to help more people. But we also have to stop that influx of people coming from Missouri, North Carolina, uh, North Dakota, Louisiana that come in. And now uh, my counterpart in Los Angeles has been saying there are people coming to Santa Monica and Venice Beach now via plane. Because San Francisco and Vancouver, Canada are offering anybody who wants to leave, plane tickets. So uh, we're.
I haven't heard that and I'm gonna have to go and fact check that. But that's, who, who's, who was saying that's happening?
Uh, council member Tracy Park.
Okay.
In Venice. And uh, she's got confirmation of that from LAX. That's yet another avenue of people coming to Santa Monica. So first of all, LA, which is short, 1800, 1900 police officers. Um, you know, three sides of our problem with homelessness and with public safety comes from LA. The only side that's safe right now, we have a great peace treaty with the Dolphins offshore. Everything else is up in the air. I need LA to do their part as well. I need the DA to do his part. I need the court system to do their part to help protect the residents in the area. As far as homelessness is concerned directly, yes, I had a plan. I still have a plan. I think the tide is shifting now. If, if you look in San Francisco, their reelection campaign. Um, the incumbent mayor has shifted to a more middle of the road stance, maybe even a right wing stance. Uh, there's only one candidate there that's truly quote unquote, the progressive. I'm progressive. But common sense and pragmatism have to rule what we do in the city. We haven't, as a collective city. And our residents haven't been up in arms enough to say, let's rule with common sense. Let's rule with a pragmatic government that works for residents and that has to be pragmatic in terms of homelessness too. You see Long Beach, San Francisco, many other cities saying enough's enough. Not only do we not want campsites, we have to find a way to get people out of the city. Now, Santa Monica police are never gonna go round up homeless people and push them into Venice or push them back in LA. None of us do that anymore. Ever in the sixties and seventies, police departments used to do that.
Yeah. And people would argue that still happens from LA and Venice into Santa Monica.
And it may. I, I can't prove that. But frankly, the metro dropping off, uh, the other estimate I got was six homeless people per hour, 6,000 per year. Uh, 45 to 75 uh, at the, at the metro line. I can only confirm the metro line from what I've seen with my own eyes. The 6,000 a year, I have no idea. But they're saying they are, that the average homeless person stays in Santa Monica two weeks and then moves on. The, the problem is not even with them. It's a problem is with the people who stay on Fifth and Wilshire. Santa Monica across from the library. I can give you the locations where people should be helped and moved off the street. I need the county and the state to help with that. I've asked the federal government, along with many other mayors now in the nation, to ask them to do what Bill Clinton did in the 1990s. Bill Clinton in the 1990s said, we need 100,000 more police, the federal government will pay for it and disperse them out to cities. We need 100,000 mental health workers because we're suffering both from a loneliness epidemic in the United States. And we're suffering from a major drug abuse crisis in Santa Monica, which LA County frankly, is not helping.
No, I, I get that. So, so here's, here's a rat though. We're approaching our time and, and not that we can't keep talking forever. We can go on these, these conversations and go a very long time, but we do have to wrap it up at about, about this point in time. So what I want to do is give you, um, you want to, you can give, we can transition to a closing statement if you want to do that. If you really want to hit another topic, we could hit another topic very quickly and briefly.
Hit another topic.
And roll that into your closing.
Hit another topic.
So the question is, is there something you wanted to talk about that we haven't had a chance to yet?
Well, I, look at, we're, we are a big complicated city. We're a world renowned city. That's losing our cheap, uh, having us be the, the worst climate for business in the country. That's a horrible distinction. I want to be the best city. Uh, having a city where every single day I have more reports of crime, suicides, uh, mental health breakdowns, attacks, assaults in our city. That's a horrible distinction. We have to change that. I'm best suited to help change that scenario because I'm the one who is brash enough, outspoken enough to hopefully find a way to galvanize all of our residents to know that we have to do more. It has to come from residents. Um, thirdly, uh, business climate downtown is still recovering. Yeah, we have a lot of great investment in downtown, but our residents are now fearful to go downtown. Uh, we need to allay those fears by making sure our city is safe. And then return downtown Santa Monica to a place of economic prominence. I'm encouraged that Montana Avenue is doing great. I'm encouraged that. I'm encouraged that Ocean Park Boulevard now is fantastic, that parts of Main Street are good, our neighborhood shopping is alive. But downtown by residents is seen as a catalyst for um our recovery. I need that, I need to make sure that hotel revenues do not decrease in the city. Uh, hotels uh occupancy is dropping instead of increasing. That's a result of crime and homelessness. That's a result of the appearance of a world-class town, beach-influenced town that is going in the wrong direction. So I've been fighting for all those things. I meet with small businesses, I meet with corporations, and I meet with residents every single day on our streets who tell me what they need. I wish all seven council members were doing the same things, that they were on the streets, that they were trying to make sure the city got better. I wish they were out at our city parks, walking our parks, walking our dog parks, listening to people on the streets and walking through alleys and streets and doing our best. Uh, and a quick example of that, um, there was a homeless woman, I didn't know she was homeless, but she was attacking me a couple of weeks ago on Nextdoor. And um, I offered to meet with her and offered three times, and she agreed to meet with me. Catherine and I met with her at a local Starbucks uh a week ago Saturday, two weeks ago Saturday, and talked to her. She started crying, newly homeless, from the city. Now, she has a variety of issues, but um, within four days, I got her in the Samuel Shell. There is housing available for people who need it. Uh, she's out looking for a job. Uh, they took her small dog, they took her, and they're working to get her uh, uh, permanent housing. Salvation Army Santa Monica helped tremendously with that. Has a, in full disclosure, I'm vice chair of the Salvation Army. But uh, there is a way to do this, but we have to be willing to really go on the streets, examine the conditions, understand the conditions, and then act on those conditions. And that includes businesses, that includes our future goals towards sustainability. Our future goal, goals to make sure we're water-reliant. And uh, very important, we need to regain local control for a charter city from the state of California, which has absolutely taken over the zoning, taken over uh the fact that we may get twenty, thirty, thirty-four-story tower in East Santa Monica, things like that. That's all really important, and I probably took all my time.
Probably did.
But, but uh, lastly, look at, I, I love this city, I love this place. I've walked every street, every alley in the city. I am unhappy almost every day. I saw my mother yesterday afternoon, she's ninety-six, lives on Twelfth Street in Santa Monica. She said she didn't like the city anymore. That was heartbreaking to me. I want us not only to like the city, I want residents to love the city, remember why they moved here and know that Santa Monica Police, Santa Monica Fire, the city manager, city staff, all of us are working, rowing one way to make sure the city is safe, the city's clean, that our parks are usable for seniors, for children, and they're not gonna worry about finding a syringe, uh, stepping on a glass pipe. And that they don't have to worry about being followed or uh worried about possibly being attacked on the streets. That is, I, I need a city council with a continuity of purpose to say that we're gonna do everything we can to still be compassionate, but keep the city safe. And that's why I'm running for a second term. Uh, no other reason, there's nothing in it for me, except trying to do my best for the residents of the city. And yes, we have accomplished a lot in the last three and a half years. We need to accomplish a lot more, that's why I'm running again.
Got it, cool, that's gonna be our time, but thank you, appreciate you coming, talking to us.